All right, we are ready to go.
All right, welcome everyone to the October 20, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Henson, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Tapke.
Here. All stand for the pledge and this evening we have Cory with a K to lead us in the pledge. And you just come stand up here and you can get going whenever you want to.
All right, you're all standing.
We're ready for you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several items to discuss. First of all, we have 4A3, which is a new item that will set a public hearing date for vacation of the Water Main easement, Resolution Number 7628. We have 4E1, which has a corrected project number, which has been corrected to PR2015-2. 4F4 has corrected an address for B Well Massage to 226 First Avenue East. And 10E1 has a corrected project number to PR2015-3.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anything from council? Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as, would this be as amended or is this as presented?
This will be as presented and I also want to acknowledge that items 10E1 and 2, I'm sorry, 10A1 and 10A2 have been pulled at the request of the applicant.
Thank you, sir. Entertainer motion from council. Council Whiting.
To approve the agenda as presented.
You have a second? Senator Council Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business, anything to remove? I don't think we can add this evening. Anything to remove from the agenda? Council Mokel.
I need to abstain from 4F4.
Abstain from 4F4, okay. Just so everybody knows, that will be, she will vote for consent business but understanding that she has abstained from 4F4. Council Luce.
4F6.
4F6, okay. Anything else? Entertainer motion to approve the consent business as amended. Councilor Lehman.
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
You have a second? Senator Council Luce. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the consent agenda items for October 20, 2015. 4A1 adopts ordinance number 921, which amends a zoning map for property located at 2544 Lakeview Drive, changing from rural residential to low density residential. 4A2 adopts Resolution Number 7627, which approves the preliminary and final plat of Gateway South First Edition, approves a conditional use permit to allow assembly and manufacturing operations in the light industry I1 zone, and denies a variance request to exceed the allowable coverage. 4A3 adopts Resolution Number 7682, which sets public hearing date to consider the vacation of a water main easement. 4B1 declares bicycles and miscellaneous property held by the police department as surplus property, and authorizes proper sale or disposal of these items. 4C1 adopts Resolution Number 7621, which declares costs to be assessed, orders preparation of proposed assessments, and sets a public hearing date for the 2015 street reconstruction project number 2015-1. 4C2 authorizes appropriate city officials to execute the drainage and utility easement agreement with Shakopee Public Utilities for regional ponding. 4C3 authorizes appropriate city officials to execute the Scott County Turnback Agreement associated with the County Highway Number 16-31 project. 4E1 adopts Resolution Number 7625, which approves plans and specifications and orders of advertisement for bids for the Quarry Lake Park pedestrian bridge improvements, Project Number PR2015-2. 4E2 authorizes the replacement of the Ice Arena hot water heater with a recommended high efficiency hot water heater in an amount not to exceed $18,000 to be paid from the building maintenance fund. 4E3 approves the revised agreement for the Youth Sports Association affiliation with the City of Shakopee. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $2,223,928.10. 4F2 approves the minutes of the October 6, 2015 meeting. 4F4 authorizes the purchase of election equipment in the amount of $114,800 to be paid from the City Clerks Fund and the Unallocated Fund. 4F4 approves the renewal of the seven listed massage therapy business licenses. 4F5 adopts ordinance number 919, which enacts a city code for the City of Shakopee to amend, restate, revise, update, recodify, and compile certain ordinances of the city dealing with the subjects embraced in the city code and provides penalties for the violation of the city code.
Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Senator Lehman.
I guess I'd just note that the consent agenda item has corrected things on the table. So, that's what we're.
Yes, correct. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously and just reiterate, the Council Mokel abstained on 4F4. Moving on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. It's time when anyone can come up to the podium and chat with us about an item that's not on the agenda.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Cristhada Barini. I'm a reporter with the Shakopee Valley News. I am here today to tell you that this is my last meeting with you folks. I have recently accepted a position as the editor of the Twin Cities Daily Planet and Friday is my last day with the Shakopee Valley News. So I just wanted to thank both the City Council Mayor and the city staff for all your candor with me over the past nearly two years that I've been working in Shakopee and thank you. It's been great getting to know you all and I hope that our paths cross again in the future. So, thank you again.
Thank you. We'll miss you. Senator Lehman.
A question, will you be around at the end of the meeting to say thank you?
Sure thing, yep. I'll be here. Thank you.
Perfect. Anyone else? All right, Mr. Mars.
My name is Bill Mars, 1279 Sider Circle, Mr. Mayor, Council. There was an item pulled on the agenda tonight, I believe it was 10A1. That was at the developer's request and is the city in receipt of a letter from the developer and is a copy available.
That was at the applicant's request?
Yep.
So, yes, I don't know if we have anything available, but I'm sure we can.
We do have the writing, the request in writing. I can provide you with a copy.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on to item number 6A, vacation of public right-of-way roadway easement adjacent to Canterbury Park. Entertainer motion to open a public hearing? Council Lehman.
Motion to open a public hearing.
You have a second? Senator Council Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. What we have on the agenda of public hearing is vacation of public right-of-way and roadway easement for property near Canterbury. This diagram identifies the area that's being proposed to be vacated. This is Verling, this is 12th, and this is a segment of road that they've asked for vacation. This is a public hearing, has gone to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission by vote of 6-0, recommended approval of this vacation with, with conditions as stipulated by staff in the report. Two options, one is that they either provide drainage utility easements for any utilities that are, that are in this area, or to relocate those utilities outside of the areas and, provide some new utility easements for those. So, support from the Planning Commission staff for this. Are there any questions?
Questions on the item? Senator Lehman.
So, will you no longer be able to access their establishment on this road?
Mayor, Council, access will still be here. This, this, this segment of road that accesses their site is private and you can see the drive that goes up to the north, which we currently utilize to get to their facility, will remain. It's just that this segment will no, no longer be public right-of-way, it will be private. So the access shouldn't change, it's just, it'll all be private from this part versus this segment being public and then this going forward, private.
It's currently a private road.
Part of it.
Part of it.
Up to here. Who plows it currently?
That's a good question. I know it's not me. So, I would presume that the city does to this point and then that Canterbury does from further on. There are representatives from Canterbury here that might be able to shed some light on that.
Last question, Mayor.
Sure.
What utilities do we, and easements do we currently have in this area?
The applicant and their engineering firm has been working with city engineering. We have some, some storm there. Shakopee Public Utilities has some, some easement in there for, for services and Center Point Energy has some utilities. So, they've been working diligently with all three of those agencies to address the requirements that, that those three agencies are looking for, so.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so anyone who would like to comment, now is the time on this item. Don't need to, I mean, you can if you want to.
We always love hearing from Mr. Sands.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I will be real brief, because I really don't have, have a lot to add, I will answer Councilman Lehman's question that the city has always maintained and plowed this portion. This has been our maintenance and plowing and, and the only other thing I want to add is that this is part of a broader plan that we're bringing forward to the city to plat and subdivide all of our property, which right now is in meets and bounds. And this, this roadway, you know, there likely will be a roadway through there at some point, but it just makes sense for us that, you know, when the southern part of that was owned by a different landowner, it made sense to have that as a public street. Now that we own all the property on all sides of it, we believe that it makes more sense to give us flexibility as part of our plating process to, to be able to come forward with, with lots and, and streets that make the most sense as the development evolves. So we're just looking to vacate that and ultimately we'll come forward with the plating, you know, process here in the next couple of months. I also want to mention that we have agreed to provide easements or pay to move as, as has been requested by the city. Our, our engineering staff is working on those easements with city staff already. Other than that, just to answer any questions.
Senator Lehman.
It's probably pretty early in the process for me to have this concern, but I'll, I'll put it out there early. If this access going into your establishment isn't available, I'm worried that that's going to put a bigger burden on the Shenandoah side with the homeowner area that complains already, so. Don't know if that's the future or if the north axis of Fourth is going to be more viable or, I don't know what your plans are, it's way too early, just kind of expressing my concerns early.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Lehman, I think when we bring forward the, when you, the city sees the plan that we've got in place, we, we are addressing that concern. I think in a way that's far better than what we current, what you currently see here.
Should've known that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Samson. Anyone else like to speak on the item? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Mokel.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Senator Council Whiting, discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we need a motion. Council Lehman.
I'll offer Resolution 7626, Resolution approving the vacation of a public right-of-way roadway easement of the portion of 12th Avenue located west of Verling Drive, move its adoption.
Do you have a second? Senator Council Luce, any discussion? Who said?
Well, Mayor, I think it's clear in the staff memo and by the applicant that the easement issue is, is addressed, so I think we're.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number seven, business removed from consent agenda discussed at this time. Item that was removed was 4F6. Council Luce.
I'm wondering what changed at this property. It was a retail store of the similar nature. Why are we needing SAC credits for this shop? What changed?
Okay. Did you hear the question?
Good evening. I actually heard parts of the question. I'm assuming that you want to know since there was a business in here prior to why we're now adding one credit. I did take out my fabulous Metropolitan Council sewer availability charge manual and inside here, it does say that for every 10 seats that you have in a restaurant, it's one credit. I'm assuming when the wave was inside there that they had less seating available. I believe Monka Beans has now doubled that seating, hence they've asked them to add the one additional credit.
Explains it, that's all I needed.
Perfect. Any other questions? Senator Lehman.
The question I had, she explained this to me at the last meeting. I do have a lighter if you want some help with that manual.
Yes, sir. I was going to make you a copy for Christmas.
My question goes back to Councilor Lewis's statements in the past about, at what point do we have a system set up in place for reimbursement of this fund so that it can continue?
And I did check with finance and we have close to $400,000 in the fund right now. We did talk about when we do use up all those credits, that that might be potentially something that we would do. The EDAC had shown some interest in helping smaller businesses because for some of the large companies, this is still a large blow, but for a small mom and pop shop, being able to afford the SAC credits required is very costly for them. So they had asked that I relook at who comes forward to try to encourage more small businesses and that's what you've seen recently.
The question still is, do we want to be proactive and, and look at that before the funds are depleted or wait until it's a crisis?
Well, and, you know, I could always try to put together some type of program right now, but those funds were allocated to be used for this purpose and so that's kind of what I was thinking about doing is using them until we're done with them. If for some reason you're worried about having them in the future, that's something that I think we could discuss, but due to the amount of land that we have available for development, I'm not sure how many we're going to need in the future.
Council Mokel.
Well, I will piggyback on that and can we identify businesses that we want to see in our downtown? Because I know a downtown coffee shop was one of them and that's why I think that this is a great use of those credits, but are there certain types of businesses that we also want to identify that we want in our downtown?
And I think that's something that you're, you're definitely welcome to encourage people to apply. As I said, one of the things we've been asking for right now is when people do apply for the credits, that they really explain their need to you. And I think we saw that with Mr. Elander when they did their business, they explained the financing and how the credits aren't something that you can get financing for. But that's definitely something as we go forward, we can encourage different people to apply. I have not seen the amount of applicants that we've seen in the past and so I'm not sure if that will change or not, but I guess time will tell.
Council Whiting.
While we're on that discussion, I would like to see part of your discussion with the EDAC, when we have these items that are lost SAC credits that all of a sudden we have to come up with paperwork or we have to come up with, you know, the, the new owner or the redeveloper or even the expander of a business has to pay. Another part of that, maybe we want to add some of those credits used for when they have bedrock issues. There's always a lot more cost to redevelopment and so possibly some of that could be focused into that area too, when you have those discussions.
And I'm glad that you brought that up because I think that's something that Shakopee's been fortunate enough to have a lot of green field development. I think in the future we're going to see more redevelopment and with that comes different costs. So you may want to give higher consideration for those businesses or for those people that are redeveloping because their costs are much, much higher than if you were taking a green field space. So I think using the credits to help offset some of those costs would be much appreciated by the businesses.
Senator Luce.
My same question comes up is, we don't want to deplete that fund. You know, if we have to put money into it, that doesn't make sense. We've got money sitting there now. You know, we've been waiting on Spock. Forget about Spock, they're, they're too difficult to deal with. Let's get a plan in place before the next one comes forward.
So these credits were given back to the city when RAR went offline, so we haven't actually taken them from any fund to put in here. They were just basically credits that the city was blessed with in a, in a sense. I think a lot of other cities would like to have a fund like this that they could use. And so, thank goodness, we haven't had to take them from anything else that we've been paid into. We've actually, in a sense, been given this gift to use for, for economic development purposes.
Council Luce.
That just makes more sense than to keep reusing them. You know, if we give them a five-year plan for payback, that's a great enticement, I think. I mean, sure, if we give it to them outright, that's even better, but what does that do for us for the future? I mean, if we set up a plan where it rotates, we can help many, many people.
And I agree with that. I do think that there is the point though that when you get to the space that you're out of land like we are now, I'm not sure, I agree with what you're saying, I would hate to see us go down to nothing in there, but I think the balance that you still have now is a, is a good amount. You're close to $400,000. If you want to set a cap where you see me not going below that, if you want to change the allocation of the credits that you have, I guess that's something that is your option.
Senator Whiting.
I'll, Bruce isn't here, so I'll throw in something from him. He wanted to save some of those credits for some of his projects too, so.
Yes, sir, he has.
There wasn't a certain.
Trust me, he has. Yeah, he has his set aside as well, so.
All right, Council Lehman.
I didn't mean to start a whole discussion on this. I was, I was just asking that we have a discussion at some point, not necessarily tonight, so. Appreciate all the comments, though.
So is that in the form of a motion?
Mr. Reynolds had his hand up too, so.
All right, Mr. Reynolds.
Well, I will just say that we will have something brought forward for discussion in the near future to talk about the issues in a little more detail and also it'd be a great opportunity to educate me a little bit on what the requirements are for using these credits and if there are any strings attached as well.
Senator Lehman.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommended one SAC credit valued at 475 and 2485 Metropolitan Council sewer availability charge SAC for Monka Beans.
Do you have a second? Senator Council Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now entertainer motion recess for economic development authority meeting? Council Lehman.
Motion recess for economic development authority meeting.
Second. Council Whiting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Mokel.
I call the meeting to order. Ms. Henson, could you please call the roll, make note of the roll? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Lehman.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Tapke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Mr. Lehman.
Motion to approve the consent business.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Whiting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Mr. Lehman.
Motion adjourned, Tuesday, November 17.
And a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Whiting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Boy, it was close, it might've been a record.
No, thank you, thank you for moving it along.
There we go.
Trying to get your record.
All right, reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, move on to item number 10E1, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the Shakopee Ice Arena and Community Center improvements. Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight to ask you to approve Resolution Number 7624, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids for the Shakopee Ice Arena and Community Center Improvement Project. We have been moving forward with the motion by City Council from the June 30, City Council meeting to design and develop the plans and specifications for option A, as was discussed earlier this summer with a dedicated senior space. On August 18, the City Council awarded a contract to RJM Construction for Construction Management Services. So since then, 292 Design Group and RJM have worked diligently to get the plans and specifications ready for tonight. Mr. Betty from 292 Design Group will be up here explaining some of those plans and specifications for you, showing some more of the concept designs that he has developed over, over time. When we look at this, the construction manager's estimate right now, based on the plans that we have and they're still finalizing these, as we finish up, we're about 90% complete on those plans, is $30,485,972. The estimate was $30,500,000 of the bonds issued. The additional amount is for other charges that were explained when we talked about the bonds. The timeline for this is that we run the advertisement for bids next week, or in two weeks, sorry, November 5 and November 12 in the Shakopee Valley News. We have construction management documents available for bidders on November 3. We plan to have the bid opening on November 24 and then bring it back to you, to City Council for contracts on December 15. So I will invite Mr. Betty up to talk about the specific plans and the concept plans and then answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We've been working away and it's kind of funny, as I've been sitting here in the audience, my email keeps dinging because the engineers are still in the office working away. But I think we're, we're at that point, we're about 90% done. We have two packages of drawings. This one up here is the, for the Ice Arena component and with this, in total, there's about 88 pages of drawings. These are big drawings, 30 by 42 inches. We'll have four volumes of spec books, so thank Sears catalog for the old school folks here. And really, we don't have a lot of pretty floor plans to show you. It's more just saying, you know, this is the list of drawings. We have all the civil, hard engineering type drawings and what I'm going to do is just stop at the floor plan. So the floor plan, really, the last time I was here, I presented the colored floor plan, stepped everyone through it room by room. Really, nothing has changed. It's just a development of those plans. So this is for the Ice Arena here, so the main level with the lobby and the two ice sheets and then the upper level that shows the dry land expansion space, the seating from above and the community room. And then this just keeps going on and on into more detail. I have the similar type of package for the community center and, drag it over. And this set is 106. And this set is 106 drawing sheets and similar type of setup, but you can see the floor plans, there's a lot more detail in them. We'll be finalizing it next week, putting on final dimensions notes and so on, but we're really getting into the, the nitty-gritty of everything. So this is the lower level at the aquatic locker rooms, the pool level, and then the upper level with the senior space and community room out front, the indoor children's play area, fitness studios, and so on. So it's, it's really coming along nicely. And what I want to end with, we showed some kind of preliminary renderings last time we were here. They're kind of more in our sketch form, making sure everything works. And since then, we've been starting to develop more finished renderings. And once again, a person in my office is still working on these, but they're coming along. So you can start to get a more photorealistic rendition of what the project will look like. This is an image of the Ice Arena with its trellis, the, the entry into it. You can see the driveline, you know, drop-off area here, the sidewalk that makes the connection up to Fuller, and, you know, the signage for the Ice Arena. And just kind of a nice image, I mentioned before about the glass that we have to help, you know, stark out. Let's show that people are home and things are happening. This is an image inside the Ice Arena. So what you're seeing on the left side, that's the glass that views into the main, main arena. So you can see the action going on. The flooring, it's rubber flooring within that area. And over on the right, we have our concession area, and then the connecting link above that gets everyone up to the upper level seating and dryland area. So kind of a, a good feel of, of what the facility will look like. And then we have a couple more renderings we've added. This was the last one, looking from the Ice Arena back towards the community center. So the entry here in the community center, the glass into the community room, I think that's a real nice feature for that room, seating for about 140, and be able to know that something's going on. We have some, been incorporating some things with this trellis area, bringing landscaping into it to soften it. And back here, recalling a lot of those stone, some stone elements, and a bench, you know, fireplace, and at the entrance signage. So it's a nice, warm, welcoming feel when you come up to it. This is an image, kind of coming out of the locker rooms, out into the pool. So you can see the actual slide here that goes down and out, comes down, drops into the water. This is the, the larger play feature here for younger kids to go up and down. There's actually a slide that comes down on this end. Opportunity for a little climbing wall in the deep water pool. And then, you know, smaller type features here for younger kids. So the idea, we can start young here and go around to older. So just a good feel, the, the fitness up above, I think is nice. So you have some views outside, but also into the aquatic, so it kind of connects and weaves everything together.
Are these the ones that you've, have they been chosen yet, or are they just example ones?
These are, we have one play feature here, we just couldn't get a model of yet. But this one is similar to what will be there. What happens with these, we'll, we'll bid them out and then we'll do final design. So this kind of gives us a scope, so then we can pick the final colors and all the little tweaks, all that type of stuff.
Thank you.
Yep. But we want to make sure everything fits and works and, and has a, you know, kind of a good rhyme and reason to it, so...
We appreciate that.
Yep. And then, this is the last one, and, and I literally pulled it off the desk tonight before I came here, so we don't have people in it yet. But this is, in the community room, kind of a setup for a wedding function. So like a, a wedding reception. So the idea of, you know, nice tables here, fireplace right in here. We even, Jamie and I discussed tonight, the, you know, opportunity to reuse the fireplace that we'll be taking out of the community center, kind of reuse it in here. You know, the head table, bride groom, so on. So we have a little bit of change in ceiling, adding a little wood, some warmth to it. And then if you look back here, you can see this is the sliding door to the senior area, so that can slide open during the day when seniors are in there. So it gives good flexibility of space. So those are kind of the development off of the kind of concept sketches we had last time. So, any questions?
Councilor Luce?
What's the seating capability on that room?
140. 140 cozy for a wedding.
Other questions? I think they were good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything that you need specifically from us this evening?
No, I'm just closing it up. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for staff at all? Councilman Lehman?
Do you have any information on the bond sale?
I believe we set a date, Ms. Wilson? Timing information, is that what you're looking for?
Are they out for sale now, or...
No. The plan would be to bring forward, I believe it's November 17th, for the council to authorize the offering of the bonds for sale. And then you would award the contracts, as Ms. Polly mentioned, on December 15th. And we'll be asking the council to set a special council meeting two nights later on December 17th to actually award the bond sale. Because once you've awarded all the contracts, you'll know the exact dollar amount that you need the bond sale to be. So one action on November 17th, I believe is the date, and the second one on December 17th.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion for this item? Councilor Whiting?
Offer Resolution 7624, approving the plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the Shakopee Ice Arena and Community Center Improvements, Project Number PR 2015-3, and move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Councilor Mokel?
Seconded.
Discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes 3 to 2 with Councilors Luce and Lehman in dissent. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 11, other business. Councilman Lehman?
The code codification. All right, let's say that three times fast. Code codification, code codification. Can I, can I, we get a copy of a piece of that to see how it came out?
I have 20 books in my office that are ready to be distributed, but we also are going to have the opportunity to see it all online. So it will be available on our website so that it's easier to search for anybody. So that's going to be a couple of days, but if you want to...
Just want to peek at one of the books, I know we've been working on it for a long time.
Yeah, definitely.
I just want to...
After the meeting, I can go grab a copy and you can have a look.
I want to kind of read a little bit of it, because I know we changed the wording to be more user-friendly, if you will.
Yes.
And I'm a pretty simple type person with not the highest reading abilities. So if I, if I can get through it pretty easily, then we've done a good job.
It's spellbinding.
All right.
I can get you a copy afterwards.
Appreciate it.
Any other business? All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, November 4th at 7:00 PM. Councilor Whiting?
Make a motion to adjourn till Wednesday, November 4th, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Councilor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, we're adjourned.